Too smart, not too dumb.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and our special guest with Youth Leadership, Welford. Welcome to the January 31st, 2013 City Council Meeting. Tonight we will begin the meeting with prayer by Toby Gilley. Prayer and the pledge, Council members.
Thank you Vice Mayor. Put your bow with me, please. For God, our most loving heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this wonderful day that you've given us and all the many blessings you bestow upon us each and every day. We thank you for this wonderful city in which you've given us to live. Tonight, Father, as we come to make decisions for our community, give us your wisdom and guidance. Father, be with our military, both home and abroad, and our law enforcement and firefighters as they protect and watch over us. Your sons and women pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, fellow council members in public. Before we do the consent agenda, our service excellence coordinator, Shannon Logan, has a little presentation about our Stars program. Shannon, I'd like to give us a little update on the CGA after that, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Good evening, council members. And I would like to present to you tonight our Stars Award winner for January, and we're going to do a video presentation because our award winner is in school tonight. He goes to school on Thursday nights and trying to finish up some education. And he will be here on March 7th. Hopefully, we'll meet that week because that's his spring break to receive his award in person. But since he could not be here till then, we wanted to do a little video so that you could see him getting his award and that he would somewhat have the experience of everyone else at home. So, City TV did a little thing for us, and if we're ready, we'll go ahead and roll that now. I'm proud to be here tonight with our January Stars Award winner, Matt Jarrett. Matt is with the IT department and has been recognized for his award because of his wonderful internal and external customer service. Matt, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Matt received this award because he received several nominations for his outstanding work with both the internal and external customers. A lot of what Matt does in the IT department not only affects those of us who work for the city, but also those of us who serve the city, and his work in the community has been so noted. We're very proud of Matt and all the work that he has done for the city of Murphysboro. Thank you, Matt.
You're very welcome. Oh, it is a great honor to receive this award, and it is very, it's unexpected, but very much appreciated, and it's a pleasure to work here, and I look forward to several years to come.
Matt, on behalf of the City Council, we're proud to give you this award. You have surprised us and amazed us with your creativity, your hard work. You're saving the city money. The programming that you do is benefiting our residents and our city departments. The use of our electronic agenda has made us more efficient, and you've been a great team player and all that. We're proud of the hard work that you do. You're the tallest Stars winner we've had yet. We'd like to congratulate you.
Very good. Thank you very much.
I'd like to congratulate Matt Jarrett with his fine award. I'm glad to see that the city now recognizes rock stars like Matt. Matt has been one of the unsung heroes in IT for the city, not only helping IT, but helping anyone that needed help. He's a problem solver, and we really appreciate having him on our team. So, once again, I'd like to say congratulations, Matt, on a job well done.
So, I'd like to congratulate Matt Jarrett. Matt's one of the more unassuming people that you would ever have the opportunity to meet, and we're very proud of Matt and all the work that he and our IT department do. Mr. Lilly, who is our IT director, and Matt will be here again in March, hopefully in person, to present the award to Matt then at that time. So, with that said, I'm very proud of our Stars program and continue to look forward to hopefully many more years of success with that program. On the next topic, Vice Mayor Washington, you asked me to give you an update on the Citizens Government Academy. We've had two sessions of our Citizens Government Academy. Our academy is completely full. We were able to fill all of our spots, and we're very excited about that. Melissa Wright, our city finance director, was one of our presenters this past week, and I think she and her team, Erin Tecker and Anna Stovall, did a great job, as well as our city communications team of Michael Neville's and Steve Burris, and also our human resources department with Glenn Godwin and Pam Russell. And the class seems to really be enjoying it so far. They seem to be having a really good time. They ask a lot of questions. They're very talkative, and they seem to be really enjoying their backdoor view of the city of Murphysboro government. Next week, we'll be visiting with our police and fire departments, so I think that that would be a very exciting opportunity for them. If anyone is still interested in joining the Citizens Government Academy for our next session, I'm already receiving applications for the next go-round, and we're not even real sure when that's going to be yet. Hopefully, y'all will approve another session. But if you'd like to go ahead and find that application, it's available on the website, and you can send it in to me. We look forward to doing, hopefully, another one of these very soon. Also, the picture of this year's class is also up on the website, as well as some information about the Citizen Government Academy, some of the activities that have taken place thus far.
Great. Shannon, council members, if you get a chance in your busy schedules just to drop out for a minute, I think you'll be really enthused about what you see. Some of us were there for the first session. I didn't make it this past session, but I've heard nothing but good feedback, and I think one of your classmates is in attendance tonight, Mr. Baines. So, it's always good to see Mr. Baines, and Shannon, you're doing a wonderful job, and I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
All right, council members, let's go to the consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that you see that you would like to have in discussion or have an issue with? If not, please make a motion.
No questions, Vice Mayor. I move for adoption of the consent agenda.
Second. Melissa, call a row, please.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye.
Council members will have the minutes for December 20th, 2012, a regular meeting and January 10th, 2013, regular minutes.
Move for approval.
Second. Ms. Wright, call a row, please.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye.
Third reading. Consider for passage on third reading, third and final reading, ordinance 12-0-Z44 to amend residential development PRD district located along Manchester Highway, US Highway 41. Third reading.
So moved.
Second. Ms. Wright, call a row, please.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye. These are for second readings. Consider for passage on second reading, ordinance 12-0-Z43 to rezonate an area located along Blackman Road and Pendleton Boulevard to planned commercial development, PCD district, single-family residential 15, RS15 district, and amend the remaining terms and provisions applicable to the remaining planned residential development, PRD district. Second reading.
Move for approval. On second reading.
Second.
Ms. Wright, call a row, please.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye. Consider for passage on second reading, ordinance 12-0-A45 to annex an area and consider a plan of services for the same located along Highway 231 North, Lebanon Highway at Cherry Lane. Second reading.
Move for approval. Second.
Ms. Wright, call a row, please.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye. Consider for passage on second reading, ordinance 12-0-Z-46 to zone an area located along Highway 231 North, Lebanon Highway at Cherry Lane to commercial friend, CF district, simultaneous with the annexation.
So moved.
Second. Call a row, Ms. Wright, please.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
No.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye. Consider for passage on second reading, ordinance 12-0-Z-47 to rezonate an area located along Memorial Boulevard at West Thompson Lane to planned residential development, PRD district. Second reading.
Move for approval. Second.
Call a row, Ms. Wright, please.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye. Last second reading. Consider for passage on second reading, ordinance 12-0-Z-48 to rezonate an area located along New Las Casas Highway to Highway Commercial, CH district. Second reading.
Move for approval.
Second.
Call, Ms. Wright, please.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye. New business. Consider renewing a certificate of compliance for Stephen H. Tambornini at McGregor's Wines and Liquors, 902 Memorial Boulevard.
Vice Mayor, this is a renewal of an existing location. The state requires this every two years, and his application was in order, and I recommend approval.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. Council members, what's your pleasure? Move for approval.
Second.
Call a row, Ms. Wright, please.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye. Pursuant to Resolution 12-0-Z-R49 adopted by the City Council on December 20th, 2012, conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning approximately eight acres along, located along Memorial Boulevard north of Cedar View Drive from single-family residential 15, RS15 district, to Highway Commercial, CH district, Ray T. Patent applicant, 2012-427. Notice of said public hearing was published in the January 13th, 2013 issue of a local newspaper. We have, Ms. Ely, it's all yours.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Our first public hearing we're bringing to you this evening is to consider rezoning approximately eight acres that shaded into purple on the map that you have before you. This property is currently a mobile home park. It at one time had many more mobile homes located on it, but that number has been steadily decreasing. It was, it's a long-established mobile home park and was developed as such in Rutherford County. The owner did request annexation to receive the city's potable water and sanitary sewer service. At that time, the owner did not request a zoning change. The property came into the city with its interim zoning of RS15. As you know, our zoning ordinance states that property will be zoned RS15 if it's zoned for residential purposes in county, so that's why it is currently RS15 today. The property is located along the eastern side of Memorial Boulevard and along the north side of Cedar View Drive. The property that's directly in front of this property between a portion of it and Memorial Boulevard is Zoned CL, local commercial district, and that's the location of a, used to be a motel, but that motel has since burned. Just to the south on the corner of Cedar View Drive and Memorial Boulevard is a gas station, and that property is Zoned CH. It's also a liquor store, gas station combo development. To the south, the property is Zoned PCV, planned commercial district, and that's the Regal Square Commercial Development. You can see that it consists of several lots, and each of those lots are approved for commercial use. The property to the north is a part of the Gerald property that was rezoned CH, Highway Commercial District, and that is the part of the property that the subject area is contiguous with. Across Memorial Boulevard, the properties are mostly Zoned CH along the highway, and then just beyond the highway, there's some RM16 zone property and RS15 zone property. The properties that are contiguous with this property to the east are zoned RS15 in our large lot residential developments. The property currently has access to Memorial Boulevard with its frontage. It also has access to Cedar View Drive. However, a portion of Cedar View Drive was closed when the Regal Square Commercial Development was built to the south. So, for any, for someone wanting to access this property from Cedar View Drive, they would be required to drive through the Regal Square Development. Cedar View Drive is a substandard street, so the city wanted to close that street so that we didn't have people traveling up, substandard street, and travel the newly constructed city streets. The, the, all seven members were present the evening of this public hearing and did recommend approval unanimously of this zoning change for the property to be rezoned from RS15 to CH Commercial Highway District. I don't see a representative applicant in the audience today, but if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them either before or after the public hearing. You should conduct a public hearing before making your decision regarding this zoning change.
All right, council members, before we start the public hearing, do you have any comments or questions of Ms. Ely before we open the public hearing? I see not. We will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone here for or against this resolution? Would you please come to the podium and state your name and address? Anyone at all? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Consider for passage on first reading, ordinance 12-0-Z-49, to rezonate an area located along Memorial Boulevard north of Cedar View Drive to Highway Commercial, CH district. First reading.
Before we vote on that, Ms. Ely, I've got a question, and I think you covered part of this. Cedar View Drive, as we're looking at it on this map, no longer exists. Is that correct?
Portions of it do exist. There is a very small segment closest to Memorial Boulevard that exists where you can access the gas station.
Right next to the store there.
But then, if you travel, I don't know if I can show you on this map, if you travel along Regal Drive and then north here, this portion of Cedar View Drive still exists, but that's, so those residents here can still have access back. So, this road connects to Cedar View Drive. So, it really, it's closed off in this area.
Right, but the road that they're using to access Cedar View Drive now, it currently has not been signed off on by the city, has it?
I don't know, signed off on by the city?
Is it under the city's control, or is it still under the development?
All the right of way. They're within city limits.
Cedar View Drive has not been, along the frontage of this property, the only part that's closed is, it's more of a barricade.
Right.
So that that portion of the street along the frontage of this property on Cedar View still physically exists. It is a substandard street. It's very narrow. It has a very narrow right-of-way and a very narrow road bed, and there is a water line in that street. We expect that when redevelopment of this property occurs, that it be reconstructed back to the street in the back with the, as part of the planned commercial development, so that we'll have access back out to Regal Drive.
So, we do think it'll come back to what we're looking at on the map here?
Yes, sir, I do. Also, we have laid the groundwork for a future street intersection at the north side of this property onto Memorial Boulevard, and we've laid the groundwork for it to be also a signalized intersection as these parcels on both sides of the road develop, as well as the intersection with Brent Mead and Kings Ridge. We've identified these potential signal points, and we've protected them, and that's one of the reasons why we want to see Cedar View Drive closed, because it conflicts with that spacing.
I guess right now, the only way you can travel down, be on a motocross or a dirt bike, I guess, because it's a pretty good berm you've got there to prevent people from going down it, and I think you've even expanded it so you can't go around it.
Yes, sir.
But, and I understand what you're doing there. The only thing is, the road that they're now accessing on, I'm not sure that it's an approved road because it's got a pretty large pothole at the end of it, and I've had some neighbors on the backside of it back there saying, "You've closed off our road that we did access on," and the road that we now have access through has some pretty major potholes in it, and it's a pretty good obstacle course for them to get, still get back to their neighborhood, so.
Mr. Smotherman, I'll report that to our street department, and if it's in our public right-of-way, we're going to fix that pothole.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Smotherman and his staff. Any other questions, any other comments, inquiries? What's your pleasure, please? This is first reading. Move for approval on first reading.
Second.
Ms. Wright, call a row, please.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye. Pursuant to Resolution 12-0-R-50 adopted by the City Council on December 20th, 2012, conduct a public hearing to consider amending zoning ordinance Section 24, Article 5, subsection D, Planned Signage Overlay PS District regarding flag signs, planning staff applicant, 2012-18. Notice of said public hearing was published in the January 13th, 2013 issue of a local newspaper.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Our next public hearing is to consider amending the zoning ordinance as it pertains to our planned signage overlay district section of the zoning ordinance, and it's specifically regarding flag signs. As you know, several years ago, the city adopted a new overlay called the PSO, or Planned Signage Overlay District, that would pertain to properties that are large in size, unique in character, and have an overall management scheme that would be able to manage the zoning plan. The PSO allows the developers to come up with a plan, a signage packet, that their entire development would have to adhere to, and we've seen it successfully implemented in several developments in the city. The Avenue has a PSO, the Hospital has a PSO, Stone's River Mall has a PSO overlay, and I believe Amazon has a PSO overlay. So, you can see they're all unique, and they're not, this isn't something that small developments can do, but we found a trend that while laying out the groundwork and the regulations for their planned signage program book, oftentimes, the desire for a flag sign is overlooked. And as you know, probably better than I do, flags are considered signs, even if they are American flag, or if they're a pirate sign, or whatever they choose to have, or the State of Tennessee sign. And the applicants get through this legislative process, which usually takes four months, and it could be a little quicker, or it could take a little bit longer, and at the end of that process realize that they've neglected to include standards for their flag signs and therefore are not allowed to have flag signs. I think staff have seen this problem reoccur and has prepared an ordinance amendment that would allow flag signs for all PSO properties according to our zoning, or according to our sign ordinance as it exists today. So, even though they wouldn't write in specifically in that PSO program book, their flag signs that they're allowed to have, they would still be permitted to have flag signs, and those flag signs would absolutely have to conform to our standards that all commercial developments in Murphysboro have to conform to. So, the planning staff and building code staff did come up with these amendments, and you have a copy of that in your, or in your iPad, and we took it to Planning Commission. Planning Commission did unanimously recommend approval of this change, and all seven members were present that evening. If you have any questions about this, I'll be glad to answer them, and if you have specific sign ordinance questions, I believe some of our legal staff will be glad to help answer those questions, but you should conduct a public hearing prior to making your decision regarding this ordinance amendment.
Thank you again, Ms. Ely. Council members, do you have any comments or questions of the staff before we open the public hearing? Not everybody wants. Okay, okay, if not, we will now open the public hearing. Is there, is there anyone here for or against the resolution? All right, all right. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Consider for passage on first reading, ordinance 12-0-50 to amend Appendix A, zoning Section 24, pertain to planned signage overlay PS district. Move for approval.
Second.
All right, council members, call a row, Ms. Wright, please.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye. Consider recommendations of the Planning Commission. Mr. Ely, now.
Yes, sir. Vice Mayor Washington, members of the council, during this regular meeting on January 9th of 2011, the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing and studied the following matter which has, it has recommended for approval and which the council needs to schedule for a public hearing, and that is a matter of an annexation request for approximately 3.27 acres adjacent to the Sinkin Creek wastewater treatment plant to be annexed for an expansion of that plant. We need to schedule that for a public hearing.
All right.
March 7th.
March 7th. Council members, look at your calendars and see if you have any conflicts. Check your calendar. What is your pleasure, council member?
Move we set a public hearing, March the 7th.
Second.
All right, call a row, Ms. Wright, please.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye.
My second item of my business is also to schedule a public hearing. During this regular meeting on January 9th, the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing and considered the adoption of the Greenways, Blueways, and Blackways Master Plan. After the public hearing, the Planning Commission unanimously adopted it. It's being recommended that the City Council also schedule a public hearing and also adopt this plan. You'll need to, there, I don't think there is a 30-day advertisement period or anything like that for this type of public hearing by the council. I would remind you that the council and the Planning Commission, the Recreation Commission, and the Greenway Special Projects Committee had a joint session to hear a presentation on this plan, and I'm very excited about it. It's something that's going to have long-term benefits for our community.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ely. Lot, though.
I would suggest March 7th would be a good day for this one as well.
Toby was going to say that. Council members, what's your pleasure?
Move for approval. Second.
Call a row, Ms. Wright, please.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye. Consider for adoption Resolution 13-R-02 to approve the cooperative purchasing network as a purchasing cooperative under the city's procurement code. I think, Ms. McGowan, that's you.
It is, sir. As you know, under the procurement code you adopted, we have a variety of ways to procure goods where we can take advantage of competitive selection process that another government goods where we can take advantage of competitive selection process that another government or another entity has done. The code calls for the council to approve cooperative purchasing agreements, and that is what this resolution would do. Our IT department is interested in making some procurements through TCPN, and this resolution would approve that by approving the execution of the terms for participation in that agreement, which are on the backside of the resolution.
All right, council members, if you have any questions or comments, it's time to make them. If not, let's move on.
Move for approval. Second.
Call the roll, Ms. Wright, please.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Next on the agenda, letter from city manager with regards to American Red Cross Partner Program.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, members of city council. The Red Cross chapter has approached the city asking us to participate in their partner program. The Red Cross certainly has provided great assistance to our residents in time of need. The partner program is a program where they are looking for volunteers to assist them should there be an emergency. So what we are recommending to you is that the city enroll and participate in this program. What it would mean would be that we would make city employees available to them for a couple days up to two weeks. The city would bear the cost of their salary benefits and workers' comp, but clearly, our city employees have a well-developed base of knowledge about our community, so they may go in and answer the phone in a, in a help center. They may help load supplies and provide food. So we want to participate with them. Certainly, their job at the city is gonna come first, and if they're not needed in our emergency response, we want to be able to make available our talented and trained staff to assist the Red Cross in an emergency, and we would recommend your approval.
Council members, do you have any questions? If not, consider for adoption Resolution 13R-03, authorize the city of Murfreesboro to enter into a partner program memorandum of understanding with the heart of Tennessee chapter of the American Red Cross.
Move for approval. Second.
Thank you, council members. Call the roll, Ms. Wright, please.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye.
Do you have permits?
I have a few tonight. I have two that still like their codes, final inspections, but the rest of their applications have met our requirements. That is for a restaurant at 2832 Middle Tennessee Boulevard, which is a new location, and a restaurant at 505 North Thompson Lane that's had an ownership restructuring and they need to replace their permit for that reason. I also have a ownership and name change for a restaurant in, I guess it's like a bar and grill, at 534 Southeast Broad Street, and that one has completed all inspections.